Thank you very much. Why don't we have a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez. Chair Dickerson.
Here.
Okay, they will move on to the approval of the Planning Commission minutes of February 5th. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes and do we have a motion?
Chair, I'll be abstaining.
Okay.
I move that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 5th.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second it because we have two members that will be abstaining otherwise, so I have seconded it. Do we have a vote? Yeah? You were looking at me pensively.
I'm furrowing my brow because if you said two people are gonna abstain, then...
Two people have abstained.
Oh, I only heard one.
Well, what I'm saying is that they were not here.
Because then we should carry the minutes over because we're not gonna be able to approve them then.
Okay, that's a good point, or until Tom gets here.
I would like to just say for the record, though, even if you were not at a meeting, you can vote in favor of minutes, it's legally acceptable.
Then I guess we can if we want to.
But if you're not comfortable, we can kick them till the next meeting.
No, that's fine.
I'd like to second.
I didn't, I haven't read them yet.
Okay, that's...
Members of the Commission, if I may interrupt, these are the minutes for which meeting date?
February 5th.
The records show that Commissioner Seifert was in attendance for that meeting?
Yes, it does. So it must mean before last.
I was here on February 1st. Yes, I can vote on that.
All right.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
All right, after a bit of a cluster, do we have a, do we have a vote here?
Commissioner Seifert.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Lopez, absent.
Aye.
Chair Dickerson.
All right, that's awesome. All right, then we will move on to the public comments period. Speakers may provide public comment on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum 15 minutes for public comment, period, unless the majority of the Commissioners object and the Chair may provide speakers more or less time to speak. Goodness, there's some new verbiage in here. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the Commission as a body and not to any specific member thereof pursuant to Government Code 54954.2A2, the Ralph M. Brown Act. No action or discussion by the Commission shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except to briefly provide information, ask for clarification, provide direction to staff, or schedule a matter for the future, for a future meeting. I do not see speakers' slips for the public. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak on things not on the agenda? Okay, then we will move on to the public hearing. First is that we will start off with 5A, Wyrick Lumber Plan Development Permit Amendment at 1306 White Court. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson, and good evening, Commissioners. This is a Plan Development Permit Amendment for Wyrick Lumber to construct four new pole-supported storage canopies and site improvements at 1306 White Court. Project site consists of two parcels for a combined 2.88 acres and is located at the western portion of the city, south of West Maine and west of South Blosser, at the end of White Court. The combined site is owned both PDM-1, Plan Development Light Industrial, and PDM-2, Plan Development and General Manufacturing. Sites to the east are also owned, PDM-1, as well as C2, General Commercial, along Blosser Road. To the west, south, and north are PDM-2-owned properties. The western parcel received approval in the late 90s as API trailers for a 8,700-square-foot industrial building, outdoor storage areas and site improvements, including parking and landscaping. The approval for an expanded outdoor storage area on the eastern lot came in the early 2000s and included a requirement to screen the newly-created outdoor storage area from Farnell Road by the construction of a 12-foot-high block wall along the site's eastern perimeter. This wall also limited site's access exclusively to and from White Court. Additional landscaping was also required between the screening wall and Farnell Road. And that landscaping was to be maintained by the property owner. And a 6-foot-high chain-link fence with slats was required along the northern property line adjacent to an existing drainage culvert that runs from White Court to Farnell Road. Though the property has changed hands a few times over the years, including API trailers, Georgia Pacific Packaging, and Diamond Eight Equipment before Wyrick purchased property in 2023, the site has remained relatively unchanged, aside from Wyrick paving the approved outdoor storage area within the last year. For context, this is a view looking southeast from the end of the White Court cul-de-sac. The left-hand side of the photo is where the pole barns are proposed with the existing building on the right side to remain. This is looking northwest from Farnell Road, shows the 12-foot block screening wall that was required with the prior approval and the required landscaping along the eastern edge of the site. No modifications to this wall, the existing trees or the landscaping as proposed. The wall turns the corner and continues west at both the north and south ends for a distance of 25 feet of additional screening from Farnell Road. The gable ends and uppermost portions of the proposed canopies will be visible above the wall, however, the mature trees will add to the screening along Farnell Road. The 4,450-square-foot pole barns or storage canopies are proposed to be located on the eastern parcel placed north to south. 30 feet of separation will be provided between each structure and set back 10 feet from the existing 12-foot retaining wall or around 30 feet from the eastern property line. As a lumber supplier, the canopies come as a necessity to protect their products from the elements. Due to the increase in impervious surfaces on the site, the existing basin to the north of the western parcel is proposed to be enlarged, and landscaping immediately adjacent to the basin is also proposed to be rehabilitated. The project is conditioned to adhere to all applicable conditions from the prior approvals, including the 18 required parking spaces that exist currently, maintenance of the existing landscaping, and screening of all outdoor storage areas. The pole barns, as mentioned, will be wood-framed construction and topped with green metal-standing-seam roofing materials with approximate height of 23 feet at the peak. The image on the right of the screen is the existing Wyrick Lumber Storage Yard in Templeton utilizing the same structures proposed to you today. Landscaping immediately adjacent to the basin is proposed to be rehabilitated, as I had mentioned earlier, to include new drought-tolerant ground cover and replacement of an existing required street tree with a species that has a mature height of around 60 to 100 feet. The enlarged basin will be deepened to accommodate for adjacent outflows and will be surrounded by a retaining wall topped with chain-link fence and privacy slats. Adjacent to this new wall and fence, additional landscaping is also proposed, and they're gonna be utilizing a fern pine, as shown on the right-hand side of your screen, to provide more screening along the project frontage. The applicant has requested modifications to conditions of approval number 21AI and BI, which is related to utility connections, and conditions 28, 29, and 30 related to fire suppression. So because the subject storage parcel area will remain undeveloped save for the new proposed storage canopies, and the canopies are not required to be sprinkled, staff has agreed to the removal of these requirements. The project qualifies as a Class 32 Categorical Exemption for Infill Development under SEQA. The project is less than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses, and is consistent with general plan in the Santa Maria Municipal Code. Project will pose no significant effects on traffic, noise, air, and water quality. No further environmental review is required. This concludes staff presentation. City staff recommends that the Commission by motion approve Plan Development Permit Amendment A 2024-0012. Staff is available should you have any questions, and the applicant is available as well.
Thank you very much, Greg. I'll start off with disclosures by Commissioners of any ex parte communication.
I have none.
I have none? All right, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and, actually, is there any questions of staff at this time? No? Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to the applicant's presentation. Sir, why don't you come on up, state your name and address for the record, and belt it out.
Hello?
It's on.
Jason Murrow, here representing the applicant and owner, Wyrick Lumber. I want to thank the staff for their presentation and the work that they've done with us to bring this to your attention for approval. At this time, there's no further information that I feel that you'll need to see. Working with Greg on getting this to the point where you can review it, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
I guess I have one question, and I know that they did not want to have, they asked to have the fire suppression removed, and I guess the question I have is if it's, if the stock is all lumber, what do we do if there's a fire?
Did you wanna...
Sure? Come on up, sir, and you state your name for the record if you could. I figured you were expecting the questions, so you were gonna leap on it.
We actually have our own fire, our own fire hydrant onsite within 20, 30 feet of the barns, and that's, and it's maintained and showing, that's kind of the reasoning.
Okay, great, thank you very much. It's nice to know it's being dealt with in one fashion or another. Okay, we don't, once again, I don't have any speakers' slips, nobody wants to talk about this, okay? So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and any questions that the Commission has for staff, by all means, if anybody has any? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. The color of the canopy top was pictured as green, is that gonna be the same situation in this, in the new canopies being built? Do we know that? Okay, thank you.
The existing roof on the building is green, it's the same green as on the canopy?
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that there was some type of consistency with the building, but thank you for that.
Okay. Further questions?
No.
No? Okay. You know, in study session, we had had some discussion about the land. Was that altered or enhanced in a way that we have proper coverage now for that road as far as, you know, the buildings and blocking the view and whatnot?
Commissioner Dickerson, there wasn't a study session on this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I remember there was some discussion.
Are you asking about the, is there sufficient landscaping along Farnell Road?
Right.
Yes, sir, that meets the prior conditions of the, the prior approved conditions of the earlier discretionary approvals for the site. There was seven trees required on the prior approvals, there's still seven trees there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? No? All right, then we need a motion.
I just have a few comments, if that's okay, Chair.
Comments, yes, sir.
Yeah, having spent most of my life in construction and 17 years as a framing contractor and longer than that as a carpenter, I did visit the site. This is a typical lumber site, the smell of the Doug fir, I always love it. It's, the outdoor storage, it definitely needs to be covered. When the carpenters, when the people actually go to use this product, it's drying out. Generally, it's a wet product, and that's the way you want to do it, that's the way you want to build with it. So having this storage, having this covered is actually going to enhance the construction aspects of this lumber. I think it'll enhance the site, I went by and drove by there, checked it out. I didn't see anything wrong with the landscaping or the site, and I think it's a natural way to go, and yeah, I can see totally supporting this.
Wonderful. Any other comments? No? All right. My only comment would be I agree as well, without all the experience that Commissioner Seifert has, so...
I've been to quite a few lumber yards.
So, once again, I need a motion.
I would, can we have the little thing on there?
There's a little thing.
Okay, I would move that we approve Plan Development Permit Amendment A 2024-0012.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, can I have a vote?
Commissioner Seifert.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Aye.
Chair Dickerson.
Aye.
Nicely done, gentlemen.
Absolutely.
That'd be the second time in 12 years.
Yeah, nice-looking yard. I didn't go into your building, but the yard looks really nice, kept well, and looked like you had a good flow of traffic.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice evening. All right, let's move on to 5B, the zoning text amendments for battery energy storage systems, BES, Title 12 of the City of Santa Maria Municipal Code. Can we hear from staff after they've made their little shuffle?
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. This is a proposed text amendment to introduce battery energy storage systems as a potential use into our Title 12 zoning code. So battery energy storage systems are referred to as BES, B-E-S-S, are facilities that collect energy either from the grid or from solar wind generation, other generation of power, and then store that energy for discharge back into the grid at a later time, usually during peak hour times. These are front-of-the-meter facilities, in other words, they're supplying the entire grid with energy as opposed to a behind-the-meter battery facility, which would be typically associated with a private solar array collecting power only to be used on that specific property. The reason this ordinance is before the Commission tonight is there has been a number of incidents, most recently a large incident at a BES facility in Moss Landing in Monterey County, which attracted a lot of public attention and public concern, and Planning Division was asked to develop an ordinance to put into effect so that our Title 12 would address these facilities. So our proposed ordinance has three main components. First off, we provide a definition of what BES is in the eyes of the city. The second is we determine the appropriate zone to locate or where these BES facilities might be able to locate, and that has been determined to be the M2 Zone, which is our most intense industrial zone. And then the final component are some city-specific elements that we want to see provided with BES applications. So first off, we have the definition, and again, these are amendments to our Title 12 zoning, so this definition would be added to our zoning code. And you can see here that it's an energy storage system, rechargeable batteries and associated equipment that then collects energy from the grid and then later discharges it back into the grid when needed. The second portion, again, we identified the M2, which is our general manufacturing district, as the appropriate location. This is the city's most intensive industrial zone, where the most intense industrial uses are identified by our code to be located, either as permitted or conditional uses. The purpose, the stated purpose, as stated in our zoning ordinance, is here on the slide, and it's to ensure development is permitted of modern industrial processes that may not be compatible with residential or commercial uses nearby, but could be compatible with light manufacturing M1 or CM uses. And the uses intended for this district are those that have the potential to create higher impacts on surrounding uses than what you would find in a lighter manufacturing So the third element of our ordinance proposal are those specific things that the city was interested in seeing. One of those is essentially a restatement of some of the state laws regarding these facilities. These are, this is specifically having to do with the front-of-the-meter facility, and then, I'm sorry, I skipped, this is the, still the second portion, this is the use as we're going to list it in our M2 Zone. Battery energy storage system, front-of-the-meter facility. We also, in parentheses, identify a number of terms that are used for uses in our zoning code, and clarify that these are not BES, just to make sure that we don't have confusion among applicants or the public. We didn't want some of these uses, which in some cases are permitted uses in some zones, to be confused with battery energy storage systems. Now we come to the third part, my mistake there. The first element is that we are requiring that the proponent or the applicant for the BES facility provide an emergency response and emergency action plan. And again, as I was mentioning earlier, this is part of state law, it's been actually reiterated in a very recent, as of last week, Public Utility Commission resolution. But this response plan would be something that the applicant for the BES facility would be developing in conjunction with our local fire department, police department, Office of Emergency Services, all of the local emergency service providers. This plan looks at not only the potential impacts that might be created if an incident were to occur, but also plans for emergency response in terms of where plumes might go if there was a fire, and how that evacuation of the nearby population might take place. All of those things would be pre-planned before the facility could take, be connected to the grid and start operation. The second aspect, and this comes out of thoughts after the most recent Moss Landing incident, and that's separation from sensitive uses. So as you're aware, we have all sorts of different uses in our community. Those that we would consider sensitive are residential districts or residential developments, mixed-use residential schools... districts or residential developments, mixed-use residential schools and hospitals. And so we are proposing that BES facilities be located at least one-quarter mile or 13, 20 linear feet away from those sensitive uses, and that would be to the site boundaries of each use, not to the battery units themselves, but actually to the facility developments. And the last item that we're adding as a city-specific standard is expanded public notice of BES facility applications. So as a conditional use listed in the M2, if a use were to come to us, an application, it would either be a conditional use permit or a Plan Development Permit if it was in the Plan Development Overlay. And instead of the standard 300-foot property owner notice, which we would do for all other applications, this ordinance would establish that we notice all property owners within one-third mile or 1,760 feet of the proposed BES facility boundaries. That was one of the issues that had come up with both the Morro Bay proposed facility and the Nupomo proposed facilities, that those parcels were so large, and the parcels around the proposed site were so large, that nearby residential developments had not been notified. So in order to avoid that, we're putting in this expanded public notice. And just to remind the Commission, when we do these public notices, the city now actually generates the address list off of current assessor parcel data, and the applicant is responsible for paying for the actual postage and other aspects of sending out that public notice. So those are the three main city-specific standards that we are incorporating into this ordinance. The thing I would just like to summarize with is that the reason we are keeping this so simple is that the technology and the industry is changing so rapidly that we were very hesitant about putting actual, specific requirements about certain elements into our ordinance. We had seen some other examples that were specifying battery type, some other examples that were specifying the setback within the property from the property line to the nearest battery unit. There, there's all sorts of standards that we could be trying to apply through this ordinance. However, as I mentioned, everything is changing rapidly. The other thing the Commission should know is that Public Utilities Commission is also looking at expanding regulations regarding these facilities. As I noted, they had just last week approved an expanded resolution that added more to their existing requirements for these facilities. I'm also aware that building code and fire code are trying to catch up to the technology as it stands today, also in response to incidents that have been occurring in terms of building code, safety, fire code, electric code, a number of other items. All of those are in process by other agencies. Building code, fire code, electric code will all still continue to apply, and we're of the opinion that it's best to leave those technical details to those codes and not the zoning code. And partnering with the requirement that any BES facility is going to be coming before the Commission as a use permit or a Plan Development Permit, that will also give staff the opportunity at the time of that application to research the latest information, the latest state laws, the latest PUC regulations, latest building code, latest fire code, and condition that project with the most up-to-date information on where the technology is when we get the next application. So we felt that this was going to be the most flexible and responsive way to create an ordinance that won't become obsolete in the next month, because it has obsolete data. So that's our strategy with this proposed ordinance. That concludes staff's, staff's presentation. The next step would be for this to go before the City Council, and so what we're asking for is the Commission's recommendation regarding the proposed ordinance.
Thank you very much, Frank. Before I ask for questions from the other Commissioners, Frank, could you, in brief, kind of outline the issue, the issue that you, that was, had up in, at Moss Landing, and how these ordinances would address those issues so that it wouldn't happen again, or happen here?
So, first off, I'm not an expert on the Moss Landing incident. I know that there's concern, and they're still doing testing, air, water, soil. They have found some contamination.
But what happened?
So, they're still also investigating that. Excuse me, my understanding, and if you look to the slide that is up, this is actually a small portion of the overall Moss Landing facility. Here's Highway 1. You can see some of the wetlands adjacent. The Moss Landing facility, from what I've read, had initially been a conversion of an existing power plant facility. Actually, you can see one of the remnant power plant stacks at the lower end of the aerial photo here. This was just a Google photo, by the way. This large building, and it is a multi-story building, it's probably four or five stories tall, housed various electric equipment. All of it was outdated. They cleared all that equipment out, and then converted the facility to battery storage by putting racks of batteries within the building. Again, my understanding is, contrary to recent applications and more recent installations, where batteries are now being placed in these individual C-train-sized metal vaults, the, the batteries within the building were simply stacks of open batteries. I've also read that there's difference between fire, and there's also what's called thermal runaway. And the batteries that were in the building were older chemistry, older technology, had more of a likelihood of what they called thermal runaway, where if they get hot, they themselves make themselves hotter, and that's a cascading effect. And that's what they believe caught, started the fire, or the thermal runaway, intense heat, therefore then catching the next battery, catching the next battery, and so on.
So it was an exothermic chemical reaction, in essence?
I'm not totally familiar with that term, but yes.
Okay, sorry.
The thermal runaway is more of a chemical reaction than it is a fire.
Okay.
And it, and it feeds itself. That is my understanding. So when you look at pictures of the outcome of that fire, this, I guess it would be the eastern portion of this building is destroyed, roof has collapsed, this is where the fire was. What some have pointed out is that adjacent to that building were units similar to these, and those units were not affected by the fire. But in any case, this just proves, or, or goes to show, that things are evolving. Technology is evolving. You know, questions of, of what happened are still being looked into. What regulations will come out of that? No one knows at this point. We also didn't want to be in a position where we were completely prohibiting these from coming to our city. City of Morro Bay has a moratorium, which they just extended for another two years. It now goes into 2027, where they are not permitting any facilities in their community to go forward. We felt that that was a little too draconian. So with the emergency planning that we're asking for, with the expanded notice, and with the opportunity to look at each of these as a conditional use, and apply conditions as necessary, and also require studies and analysis and so forth with the application, we felt that that would be the most appropriate way to protect the community, and also still have an opening for these types of facilities to make an application and prove to the community, and prove to the city, prove to the Commission, that it's an appropriate facility in an appropriate location through that use permit and Plan Development Permit process.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions?
Thank you, Chair. And I just kind of wanted to get the city staff's opinion on this. So I'm aware that Assemblymember Addis recently introduced a new bill regarding BES facilities, specifically also kind of narrowing in on what locations they're allowed to be built on and nearby. Within that bill, it defines farmland and land zoned designated agricultural use areas as a sensitive location as well, and understanding that we're surrounded by agricultural land. Is that something that we need to consider in this immediate approval if we were to, or at a later date, once, you know, it's fully approved?
So the city is aware of that other effort that's still in process. We chose not to include agricultural land as sensitive, primarily because at this point, the agricultural land is outside of our boundaries, for the most part. The agricultural, or land that is being used for agriculture within the city boundaries is entirely zoned for other uses at this point through specific plans and other things.
Okay.
However, that, if the Commission felt strongly that that needs to be included, that could be something that is recommended to the City Council.
Okay. No, I think that's important to know, because, understanding the risk involved with these facilities, so. Something to consider, I guess. I don't know. Thank you.
Further, further questions?
If, if I may just add to that last question, too, that is also something that could be considered when the, when a conditional use permit, Plan Development Permit applications comes, comes before the Commission. If a facility is proposed at a location that is nearby to farmland, that certainly could be something that the Commission directs staff to look further into potential impacts on that adjacent property.
Okay.
So that's always a potential option as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohajer. I just also wanted to add, and Frank was alluding to this, the conditional use permit or Plan Development Permit will be a discretionary-level permit. It'll be subject to the California Environmental Quality Act as well. So we will need to, more than likely, do an initial study, and agriculture is one of those issue areas that is analyzed and determined, you know, we'd have to determine that the project would have less than significant impacts to agriculture as part of that. So I just wanted to add that on, you know, that that would be under consideration.
Okay.
As well, if there was a site that was adjacent to row crops or farmland that's under production.
Okay. And then you just reminded me of a second question, actually. So, AB 205, speaking to the opt-in certification, it states that if there is like a qualifying applicant, they can kind of disregard our local ordinances. Is that correct?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I can feel that.
Yeah.
Yeah, AB 205, that is an existing law. That has been passed and is in existence. And what AB 205 is, is an opt-in process by which someone who wants to build a BES, 200 megawatts or larger, can disregard any city processes and get approval through the PUC. So that's in effect. There's nothing we can do about that. That is existing law right now.
Okay. Thank you for that.
They could build that in the city, if that was their druthers?
Yes, if they got approval from the PUC.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, yeah, I was also like, I was hearing the news, too, about how Nupomo had a 100-megawatt facility that a lot of people didn't even know about, recently approved, and not sure if it's energized yet, or if it's going to be energized. So that was, I'm sure, a surprise to a lot of people, but I'm glad that we're, we're trying not to be surprised, I guess. Frank, you had mentioned specific uses nearby that would be sort of, you know, we'd have a setback from, that included residential, mixed-use, senior residential schools, hospitals. Is that going to be an exhaustive list, or should we be thinking about public facilities, or anything that has a habitable structure? I mean, I'm, I don't know if it, if there's other facilities or sites that we should also be thinking about. We don't want to exclude those, but there's the potential that there could be other facilities or sites, I would say, I guess. So, that's one question.
I, so in selecting those facilities that we did, it's primarily where there would need to be large numbers of people evacuated from a facility. It would be difficult to, the more, the more items you add as sensitive uses, the less sites would be available, potential sites would be available. And these are the ones where, that are typically identified as those sensitive uses. Residential, schools, and hospitals. You've got mobility issues with the hospital, schools, you've also have evacuation dynamics with young folks that may not, you know, be following directions and so forth. But that's why we selected just those. But again, through that discretionary process, and also, as Dana mentioned, the SEQA analysis, if there is another use nearby to a proposal that has the potential to fall within that sensitive use definition, that could be considered with each individual application.
And the other, I guess, getting an idea, I didn't have a chance to look at our zoning map, but do we, I mean, what is the But do we, I mean, what is the, what does the M2 district look like in terms of dispersal around the city? Where is that kind of focused?
Primarily, the M2 currently is Area 9, West Ole area. There are some smaller M2 parcels scattered throughout the city. There are some off of East Donovan. But all of those are smaller and adjacent to residential zoning. So those are already excluded. There's also some adjacent to the Blosser corridor. But again, those would be excluded because they're adjacent to residential or within that distance from residential where they'd be prohibited. So primarily, you're looking towards Black Road, Area 9, West Ole, specific plan area.
And then, thanks for that, Frank. The last question was, I mean, the distance, I like that distance feels pretty far, quarter mile. But how do we know that that's sufficient? Or is that based on sort of other cities sort of starting to establish the same kind of setbacks? Or same kind of requirements? And I read, I read the write-up about the city being kind of laid out already that way in a grid. And so the separation is already naturally there, but, and maybe the zoning follows that grid. But it's interesting. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's a definitive distance. And I just don't know what it's based on, other than we're just happen to be laid out that way.
Right. The, a couple of the legislations that are in process right now that were mentioned have distances that are much greater than the quarter mile. We looked at it, knew that we would have the opportunity, again, that discretionary opportunity. But then also, like you mentioned, yes, the, the grid that we have of quarter mile, typically a Collector Street, quarter mile, Collector or Arterial, seemed to make sense in terms of where notifications should be. And yes, you're correct, our zoning is by parcel and is separated by streets typically. So again, those zoning lines typically will correspond to streets, not necessarily quarter miles, but if you have a residential zone, that usually is a straight line corresponding to an adjacent street. So using the quarter mile seemed to make sense from that standpoint. It also made sense from if there were evacuation, that might help with evacuation routes based, being that you're based on the street distances. And it's easier to identify a certain neighborhood by quarter mile streets. All of those sorts of things led to this being used. We were trying to look at, we thought about this quite a bit. We were looking at other facilities that had been approved throughout the state, trying to determine if there was some set evacuation distance if an incident were to occur. And it's all specific to each individual application. They all change, depends on the wind direction, the prevailing winds, depends on the chemistry of the batteries. So there's just so many variables. We couldn't use that incident as, or that incident topic as a way to derive any distance. So then it seemed to make sense just to use the street pattern.
And I did just notice also that it does say minimum, the appropriate minimum separation. So if that's in the text, then like you say, it could be subjective. It could be dependent on the application and the situation. It could require more?
Sure. If an environmental analysis showed that impacts, if a, if a incident were to occur, the impacts extended a certain distance through that conditional use permit, that could be considered. And we could look at whether or not we felt it was appropriate to locate the facility in that location. So that's something the commission and staff is going to be able to do, including our fire department, our police department, are going to be looking at each individual application, what the potential impact might be if there were an incident, and determine whether or not that location was felt to be appropriate. Before an application comes to the commission, Planning Division staff, Community Development Department, through information from fire, from other departments, makes a determination of whether or not we're going to recommend support or not for a project. So if we have an application that has some potential impact that seems so likely and is so egregious that we could say, well, we'll take you forward to commission, but we're not recommending approval. So that's another option as well.
And then, sorry, one more thing, Frank. The, how much, actually, how much interest are we kind of hearing about these kind of facilities in, in our city?
Well, we have had one facility that was proposed in a CM zone, I believe. Let me just double check the zone. And that did receive a plan development permit a few years ago. My, excuse me, it was a PDM1 zone. It was on Industrial Parkway. And it was a smaller facility, but it was a battery energy storage facility. It was going to be front of the meter. In other words, it was going to be connecting to the main energy grid. And it was for a 10-megawatt facility. Here's a, the site plan that was approved for that facility. This was one where we were requiring landscape along the front edge, a masonry wall adjacent to Industrial Parkway. And the rest of it was chain link with slats. And you can see there was only eight battery units. Each unit has multiple batteries, but eight of the C train-like containers that were proposed at that facility. That facility did receive a plan development permit approval. I believe at the time, we had to have the commission make the determination that it was a use that could be considered because it wasn't specifically listed. And the site is not constructed. They've not submitted any building permits for the facility at this time. There has also been a second inquiry by another property owner for their north on Industrial that had been looking at developing the facility with a couple of light industrial multi-tenant buildings. But just as we were beginning to develop this ordinance, expressed interest in having a small battery energy storage system facility installed on the site. There's no application for that facility at this time.
I think I remember, when was this one submitted?
This was back, it came to the commission in August of 2022.
Yeah, I remember this now. Yeah. Okay. Great. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Seifer.
Thank you, Chair Dickerson. We know a lot more about the batteries than we did in 2022. Fortunately, I think I voted on that. When I'm looking at the zoning map, do we have the ability to pull up the zoning map at all? Because I don't really see any sites that are suitable.
Let me see if I can pull that map up for you. Hold on just a moment.
You stated one site on Area 9. It's out on Stole Road. It's quite a far away, but it is adjacent to agricultural land, like Commissioner Mohajer had stated. We have quite a bit of M2 along the Blosser corridor, which is all down or upwind of the city of Santa Maria. And I believe there was quite a bit of smoke and toxic waste, toxic smoke that was pluming out of this facility that was on fire and moss landing. We have R3, R1, we have PD R2. This is all right across the street from these locations of M2. We have a large M2 that's not a PD overlay on Stole and Blosser, which we've had a previous fire before. We had a warehouse fire in there quite a few years ago. The warehouse burned down. So we've, we've previously had a fire in that, that place. The areas that you're talking about in town, we have Newton and Blosser. That is an M2. We have one on Donovan. That's an M2. These are completely unsuitable for this type of storage, in my opinion. It doesn't look like those would work for me at all. We have the one on Donovan, that would be right next to the Senior Living Center. The M2 right here on Newton and Blosser. There's R1, R2, R3, multi-residential, completely surrounding it. All of the M2 on Blosser is upwind. So I'm not seeing where we would actually locate, where we would, even if it came to the, to the planning commission, what would our choices be here as to what would be suitable for this type of storage?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, we, we did take a look at that. Some of the parcels that are along Hanson Way at the very edge might meet the setback requirement that we're looking at. And then it would be these darker gray M2 parcels in Area 9. And yes, that would be primarily the locations where we could accept an application for this best facility, or a best facility.
Unfortunately, we all know which way the prevailing winds go.
Correct.
So the city would be under the smoke and the debris. I mean, that would, that would come directly into our, our city.
And in an analysis of a plume, if an incident were to occur, would be something that we would be expecting to be provided when an application came to us. But yes, I understand what you're saying. And that is a situation that is created by our current zoning layout. Most of the industrial areas are down near the airport. And then on the western side of town, you only have very limited industrial on the eastern side of town. So whichever, even if we were to look at a lighter industrial, so the medium gray is our CM zone, our commercial manufacturing. The difficulty with the CM zone is that it actually has more of a public-oriented. It's where you'll find auto shops and, and those industrial uses or light industrial uses, manufacturing, where the public could be expected. And then the lighter gray is the M1. The M1 is an industrial zone where it does say, try to keep it as non-public as possible, I'm paraphrasing. But there, then again, you're dealing with light industrial. So you're looking at business parks and those sorts of things. And that's where, in terms of the zoning that the city has, M2 is our most intensive of all the zoning districts, essentially, because it is the industrial zone that allows or considers the most intense uses. So if, if we want to leave it open to a use that the city would consider, it was determined that that was the best and really the only appropriate zone for such a facility. And yes, it just so happens that the M2 that's available, even without the setback that we're proposing to sensitive uses, are, is primarily on the western side of town.
Did I hear you right that it is possible to have a moratorium on something like this as long as it's under the 200-megawatt?
I am not certain that the 200-megawatt would be a, a factor. But the city could potentially enact a moratorium. I'll let the city attorney speak more to that.
I think I understand why you threw in the 200-megawatt. And that is because, you're correct, we can't stop someone going through the opt-in process with the PUC. So we, you're right, we can't stop that. The city could consider doing a moratorium. The purpose of a moratorium, you can only do a moratorium when you have an application pending and you're concerned that your zoning code doesn't fully address and protect the city from whatever use is being proposed. And you need time to put the brakes on, to study, and to make changes to your code to protect the city from whatever those impacts are that you're concerned about. We don't currently have a application pending, so that could be difficult to address.
We have one.
We do not. We have an application for something that's not a best. And the applicant has asked verbally, made some inquiries about a best. So we could be getting close to that. Is that correct, Frank? I see the chairman looking at you.
We have a, one approved one from the past. But the one that is currently, Heather described that correctly. It's an application where the applicant came to us looking at a couple of light industrial buildings, but then started to make inquiries about what the possibility of adding a best facility to their proposal would be.
The one that was approved in 2020, the one that was approved in 2022 would not, could not be used under the, what you were discussing for moratoriums?
No, that's already been approved and potentially has vested. So it most likely would not reach back to that particular project. I believe they already have a lease in place with 3CE to utilize that facility. So the city internal management discussed an urgency or a moratorium ordinance and decided that what our preferred approach is to get this ordinance in place so that we can limit these facilities to the M2, to put in the couple provisions for sensitive receptors and for the increased notification, to require that it also have a CUP. The reason for that is, as Frank was explaining, is the concerns don't really apply equally. Or if Fundy wanted to build a facility that was 5-megawatt, we'd have a lot, and someone else, 500-megawatts, we'd have a lot different concerns. So by doing it this way, if a project were to come forward in the M2, it would require a conditional use permit. We could then assess it. And if we didn't feel that it fit in that location, even if it wasn't within whatever the 1,320 feet from a sensitive receptor, if we felt it was still a bad fit because it was adjacent to some other sensitive use that we hadn't included, but that we felt after an analysis was not a compatible use, we could still deny it based on that if we could make adequate findings. So the purpose is to get in front of this, to get something in place, to give us control when things do come forward. There's also, we've been presented with this, there's also a lot of information out there that the technology really has evolved and changed. And I am no expert on this. But that many of the problems that led to the moss landing situation, any new facility built today would, a lot of, some of those problems would not be problems today. That the technology has evolved and changed. And as Frank said, is continuing to evolve and change. So if and when a project comes in the future, our fire department, and of course, planning, will be looking then to what's the current technology, what's the current safeguards? They have shut-off valves that can be triggered to stop potential problems. They can require They can require air quality monitoring, because I guess they release vent something that you can catch with air quality monitoring. So there are advances that have been made. And then lastly, and I'll be quiet, as Frank said, the Public Utility Commission also regulates these, and those regulations are evolving as we speak.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing this correctly, it's in our best interest to get these in place now so that we have some sort of a document that we can go back to when someone does come to us and wants to build one of these facilities. I would, I would think that the notifications, they seem very small to me as far as when we're talking about smoke and toxic smoke. Most of these facilities, if not all of them, are going to be located upwind. And so it's not just the fire that we're going to be dealing with, but it's going to be the fallout of whatever toxic waste is in the air. And I mean, that's, it's going to affect quite a bit of our community. So that would be, that would be a concern of mine. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is this, is this similar to like the objective design standards that if, that the, the things we do not include are going to make it more difficult for us to deny? I mean, if we had included them, then we can point directly to the document and say, well, you know, you, you don't fit within this because?
Commissioner, members of the commission, if we were to receive an application, the commission would have to make the findings for approval for the use permit. One of those findings, and I'm paraphrasing, is that the development would not cause adverse impacts to neighboring properties or the community on a whole. This isn't quite like the objective design standards because the state law has made quite a bit about objective design standards, but this is a use that the commission can consider, can ask for an analysis of impacts, potential impacts, and can use those potential impacts in their motions on the findings. And again, with things evolving so quickly, I don't know what we could point to that wouldn't likely be out of date within a month, six months or a year, if we stayed a specific battery technology that we'd prefer. New findings about that battery technology may come out subsequent to that, saying that no, that isn't the right one to use or the safest one to use. This other is. So that's where it's, it's ill-advised to include details like that in an ordinance like this. Yes, it might give us something in our text to point to, to say, look, you don't comply with this, therefore, we're denying you. But I think we have strength through the finding process with each use permit. And if the city attorney's office has anything further on that point. Thank you.
You're welcome, Frank. You know, I have, I have similar concerns to what apparently Commissioner Seifert has brought up, as well as Commissioner Mahajer. I worry that, I understand that we need to put something in place, but I have to say that you've emphasized in many different fashions that this is a moving target right now. We have the Moss Landing incident, I think is the way you described it, which is not fully understood yet, which we do not have a full understanding of the ramifications and impacts to, to the local area. We have a technology that is evolving. We have the state, we have the community of Moss Landing that is looking to this, and then we have the state that's looking at all of these. It just seems to me that what we've got is something that we do not want right now in our community. Now, I do understand that we can't necessarily put a moratorium in, although my guess is that we could add to our recommendations to the city council that should a plan come forward that they immediately put in a moratorium and use that as the trigger. I'm guessing that we can suggest that to them. But what I would, I would say also is, it seems to me, as Commissioner Seifert pointed out, there's, there's very, very few spaces that might fit within the parameters that we've discussed. And if we went with Commissioner Mahajer's idea of including Agland in the, in the listing, well, I'm not sure there's any places at all anymore. Would that be accurate?
Considering where the M2 properties are, that would certainly further restrict the potential locations where this could go or an application could propose.
Okay. So if we added that, then sort of a de facto moratorium would take place because there wouldn't be any place you could actually fit the thing in.
I can't say definitively that it would eliminate every opportunity.
Pretty, pretty close.
It would certainly more of that M2, of that M2 zoning would be eliminated.
Okay. And also, per what Commissioner Seifert said, I also think that you, given the sliver of areas that might be appropriate, that I think we should probably expand the notification area. If it were up to me, or, and I would certainly suggest this is something we look into, I would suggest the, the additional recommendation to the city council that we, that they use any new permit as a trigger for a moratorium, at least over the next couple of years, perhaps as all these other entities start looking things, and they can decide whether they want to do that or not. And I would also suggest that we include Agland in our listing and increase our notification. Those would be the things that I would be more comfortable with as we move forward with this, this stuff.
Chair Dickerson, I just wanted to ask a question. That's okay?
Certainly.
About your recommendations. So when you say to expand the noticing, do you have a recommendation on how many feet? Because we have one-third mile. I don't know if you wanted to do like a half mile or something like that.
Commissioner Seifert, what would you be comfortable with?
We have someone in the audience that I would certainly like to hear from. I don't know what the procedure is on this chair, but we have someone that understands smoke and fire a heck of a lot better than anyone here. And I don't know how we get to hear from him or if he's here to speak, but.
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and hear from him now, and then we, and then we'll also have a, I assume you are the single public comment right here.
I also had a question on your moratorium comment, but we can get to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So the unfortunate.
I'm sorry, name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Jim Austin. I'm the Fire Marshal for the Santa Maria Fire Department.
Thank you.
I apologize. So we look at plume modeling for those kind of things, so similar to, you know, refrigeration warehouses and things like that. And to put a finite number on it is tough, at least from a fire code perspective, because it looks at singular properties. And then Chapter 12 mandates distances from public ways, property lines and other buildings. So I wish I could give you a distance based on experience. You write, the prevailing winds are going to push it into the city, but as we've seen over the last maybe decade, the weather is also unpredictable, and we can get it going towards Guadalupe, thanks to the Santa Anas and things like that. So unfortunately, I appreciate and I'm humbled by, you think I have that experience for the distances, but I really can't give you a finite. If we responded to an incident and the Santa Maria Fire Department has been, I don't want to say drug into, but we're very aware of what's going on in Napa now. I can tell you that the Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Services is working with the San Luis County Offices of Emergency, and they are looking at things like that for evacuation zones. Those kind of studies would be what someone like me would lean on for, to make a recommendation like that, which unfortunately would not help in this situation because I realize we want to expedite this ordinance. So in the end, I just, I don't have a distance that I can recommend that would have any true scientific data behind it.
Would you be more comfortable with a half mile, three-quarters of a mile, a mile? I mean, what, is there a comfort factor?
You're asking a firefighter, so.
Yeah, I know.
We're a little extreme on the other side. As far as the noticing in those kind of zones, I think if, and I don't know what kind of impact this is on my colleagues, so take that into consideration. I think a mile would be appropriate in those areas because they're less populated. And I think what happened in Napa is because it was less populated with their specified distances for noticing, the neighboring residential developments did not get noticed. So I would take that into consideration. Again, I don't know what the impact is, but if I had to make a recommendation, I would say a mile.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Seifert, you have any more questions for the gentleman?
So, Mr. Austin, you know, I, I enjoy model, model aircraft, and everything is electric now. Everything's going electric in our state, lawn mowers, blowers, the lithium ion batteries, lithium batteries. The science is catching up, but do you have any insight onto, into the Moss Landing type? I'm sure you read reports and this thermal runaway type thing. I mean, are we, are we catching up to, in our, in our fire acumen to what our technology is giving us? Are we getting close to knowing how to? Because what I've heard is that once these fires start, and, and all the videos I've ever watched about my lithium batteries that I use for my, my use is, they have to be in a separate area. You can't leave them alone when charging. They have to be in a very fire-safe area. People burn down their houses, they burn themselves. These things are really dangerous when they do catch fire. Now, they don't all catch fire, and the technology's getting better. But do you have any enlightenment on where we are as far as our fire technology versus our, our battery technology at this point? Have we, are we catching up?
Yes, we are catching up. But as, you know, Frank and Dana have stated, it's really rapid growing technology, something really we've never seen, and it's probably what our ancestors in the late 1800s, you know, in the industrial growth back then is experiencing. That being said, I can tell you that the technology that was used in Moss Landing compared to the facility down in Galida are kind of night and day. And believe it or not, in that short amount of time, the Moss Landing types of batteries, actually, the industry doesn't really even use anymore. They've gone to higher quality, higher, a better design lithium type batteries. And so, yes, we are growing, you know, and then something to take into consideration, lithium batteries are in our life right now. I mean, they're in your pockets, in your purse. They are prevalent. And so they are in cars, they are in, you know, bikes now, they're everywhere. And so the amount of incidents, and I've investigated several since I've worked for this city, related to, and as Chair Dickerson said, thermal runaway or an exothermic reaction, it is a form of that. But when thermal runaway is typically, the cause is, it was damaged. It was subjected to too much heat. It was corroded, things like that. And so it's typically another effect to the battery that caused it to fail. It wasn't the battery just sitting there kind of doing its job and failing. But the technology is growing quickly. I will tell you the facility, and again, I'm no expert, only what I've read on the Moss Landing incident, so I'll make that clear. But I'm kind of familiar with the Galida and what was built there. As you saw, they were in containers, spread out. All those containers are monitored. As the city attorney mentioned, that they do off gas. So as they are charging, they do emit a certain amount of gases and stuff. And so there are sensors that monitor it. There's also sensors in there that monitor the heat, and they have detectors in there that if the heat rises too quickly, it sets off an alarm. And then they, it's monitored, and they go down and check that out. Something a little bit unique, and again, I'm no expert, but on the Moss Landing incident, it was in a building where the ones that are being proposed now, you see them in these banks of C-Trans trailer or containers. An example is the Santa Barbara Government Center on Bediravian Miller. They have six or seven of them. They're separated around, but you can see them, and same technology, same detection, all that kind of stuff. And they are, so they are after meter, and they're for each one of those buildings, and they're being charged off those solar canopies. That's new technology compared to the Moss Landing. So I know that's a long-winded response, but yes, we're catching up with it. On the firefighting side, it's also something that we're grappling with nationwide, because if you put water on a lithium metal fire, it accelerates it. So you have to take into a lot, a lot of things into consideration, depending on where the fire is. So an example, a Tesla in a garage on fire, you have to take into consideration, you're going to put water on that, you know you're going to accelerate the fire in the garage to basically cause more damage. The other alternative is, okay, well, we protect the surrounding structures from, you know, exposures and let the car burn. Well, then that potentially causes more damage. So from an operations side, we're struggling with best tactics for that, and we're learning, and that's a nationwide study right now. So, but again, long-winded, but yes, we are catching up. But the codes are three-year cycles, so they're always a little bit behind anyway. We actually are in a, this year, we will be going through studying and making amendments to the state code because it'll be going into effect on January 1st, 2026. And Chapter 12, which is three or four pages right now, everything I'm looking at, that's going to grow exponentially because of incidents like Moss Landing or even smaller incidents that don't make the news, but we know about. And so, yes, technology, fire safety and firefighting practices are catching up, and so are the codes. But this technology is just growing so fast. So, but yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay, uh any further questions or comments in a moment? I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Chair Dickerson, I just had a couple.
Oh, you had another question.
If that's okay. Um so it sounds like, uh and I guess I can wait for your direction, but it sounds like maybe one mile for the noticing. Um I did write that down, but I would, wanted to confirm with your commission if that's the recommendation for that. And then just a clarification about the agricultural land. I think it may be helpful to clarify that if it's agricultural land that is under cultivation or if it's just any agricultural land, if it's fallow or if it's under cultivation. Um I can't say zoning because as, as Frank mentioned, many of the city properties that have agriculture on them are actually not zoned agriculture.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the problem that we run into and, you know, the other commissions can consider things as we discuss it, but I think one of the problems we run into is that, once again, because we don't know the absolute finals of what the moss landing um incident um did to the properties around the whole area, we really don't know what type of toxicity has implement, has, you know, saturated itself into adjoining land, whether that land is being cultivated or will be cultivated. We, we just don't know. You know, if, if we could get a moratorium, which I know we can't, but if we could get a moratorium of a year or two years out, by that time, all the studies have come out, you know what's going on and you go, okay, then, then we can get a better definition of this. But if you don't know what the, what the result is, you have to cast a pretty wide net. Anyway, that's my thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Seaver.
Dana, do you have something else?
Just had one more question about the, I, I had made a note that one of your other recommendations was using a new permit as a trigger for a moratorium, but I didn't fully understand.
Well, let's say, let's say that, that somebody who had come forward and had asked Frank and you guys about, you know, what about building this facility? Well, we can't, we can't do a moratorium because nobody's put an application in. But if somebody put an application in, then the city council could consider a moratorium, but they can't until one happens. So the, the, the thinking on my part was that the city council should be aware and that we should recommend that should someone turn in an application, that at that point the city council re-looks at it and uses that or considers a moratorium now that you have something that you can do a moratorium off of. That was, that was the thinking.
Okay, thank you.
And I see no comments from, from legal. That's excellent, all right. Further questions?
Chair, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Um so as far as the distance of notification, um the, the, looking at the zoning map, you know, the, the one property that actually sort of meets the criteria would be the uh PDM two, that's the farthest uh to the west, uh off of Stoll. And we have just approved a huge subdivision off of, in between Stoll, Battles and Blosser, the Blosser Ranch project. Plus, we have the, uh, we have the senior living right there off of Battles and we have quite a bit of homes. I, I would think that i- if I was living in that area and they were building a facility downwind, upwind of me, I would wanna know about it and I, I don't know the distance of what that is right now. Yeah, it looks like it possibly could be more than a mile, but that, that would be some criteria that maybe we could look at as far as.
Yeah, so Commissioner Seaver, I have, actually have that information. So it's over 7,500 feet, so we're looking at over a mile and a half, almost two miles out.
So in, in my opinion, I, I think then a, then a, then a mile wouldn't be sufficient because you're not gonna be notifying the residents of the area. Uh and I, I think that is the, is what we're trying to achieve, is letting people know what's being built. And that's, I think, one of the biggest problems that happened in Nopomo was that the people found out about it after it'd been approved and built and now they're living around it and they're, they have no say about it. So that's just your recommendation. I think that we might be able to use the criteria of the farthest uh area away and get in, into the residential area for distancing.
And, and I guess I need, since, since this is evidently becoming a larger concern, you know, something that has been a, a previous irritant of mine from a long time back and it's kind of rearing its ugly head now, and that is the word that you used, which was exactly what it is. You know, the residents should be notified, not just the property owners. Because we're getting prop, we're, we're getting large subdivisions now that are being owned by a single property owner that will have, you know, a thousand residents and one guy gets a letter and, you know, what, what they choose to do with that, that letter, who knows? But I, I, I think it should be notification to residents, not to just property owners.
All right, I think that's a good point.
And frankly, I think that's the way all of these notifications should be.
And Chair Dickerson, Commissioner Seaver, we can add that into our ordinance, that it's um property owners and occupants. I think we do, I would like to confirm with Mr. Alvaro though, that.
Whatever the definition is.
We do have the ability to do that. So that could be added into this ordinance. We could also do a mile and a half uh for the noticing, which would get you just under 8,000 feet. I think it's 7,920.
Does that get us to our community from the farthest reach or?
Mark? Would six miles work for you, Mark?
Yeah, so actually, just for, for your information, I was just curious how wide it is. It's about five miles wide, if you're curious. Um but yeah, that would get you to the edge of the community. Uh if you're trying to get all the way to Blosser, you're looking at two miles.
I, I, I think we should be actually beyond Blosser because that's where we're, I mean, that's where our main concentration of people are going to be is, is on the, on the east side of Blosser. Uh and, and we're, we're bringing these people in, building them new homes, nice area and I think they should probably have a say or at least a knowledge of what we're building. And that, that, that's just my comment. Thank you.
The other thing we could do as well is we, when these, when the projects that go before your commission are heard, we also do a legal ad notice. Um there are certain types of projects that require a larger legal ad in the, in the Santa Maria Times. Those are things like zoning text, well, like this item, a zoning text amendment, we did a larger legal ad for that. We could also include um that the notice would be the larger notice for a project like this.
As well as?
As well as the additional, um, the one and a half miles or up to two miles. I mean, we are gonna be talking about a lot of notices, mail notices within that two miles because what we do is we use a GIS program that, and we put in the distance from the uh property line out to the number of feet that we want to notice and it's basically a circle. And then all of the, if we say owners and occupants within that area will come up as a list and then we send the notices out internally. Actually, Tracy helps with those, thank you. So um it will be a big job, but if we need to do that for these types of projects, we can do it. Um the applicant does have to pay for the postage for the mailing, so we would get that from them to do it. But uh I, that's what I was talking about was just that we could do a larger legal ad that would hopefully notify the community in a, in a maybe even larger way than just a certain number of feet.
Thank you.
The, the more noticing, I would, I would just feel more comfortable, especially sitting up here and in charge of maybe approving one of these projects. I, I, I don't want someone coming up to me and saying, I do nothing about it, how could you do this? So that's really what I'm looking forward is, is just so that the community knows what's in the pipeline, what we're building, what we're approving. Because right now, uh there is a danger with these, with these situ, with these particular uh best locations and uh we're, we're getting, you know, we're getting there, we're not quite there yet as to being totally safe on it. And even just the toxicity of the uh, the off-gassing, um although it's being monitored, we're still having stuff coming into the air just from the actual charging. So, so what I'm hearing is even if there's no fire, even if there's no danger of a fire, we're still letting particles into the air that uh probably aren't the healthiest for us. And all of these properties, as you say, certain times of year, we're gonna have, and, when we have a storm, it all comes from the south, the wind definitely changes. Uh when we have the Santa Anas, the wind definitely changes, but prevailing wages, prevailing winds are, are usually coming from Guadalupe and moving towards Santa Barbara that way. So I would just feel really more comfortable letting everyone know that this is what's going on, uh because it is uh the, the commission that is gonna be, uh the, the community's gonna come to us when we're at an event and saying, you know, why did you approve this? You know, what did you think about and, and why, why didn't we know about it? So I'm just trying to avoid that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um I'm just looking at the language here and would it be possible to just state nearby sensitive uses, including and not limited to residential, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? That way, there's kind of like a case-by-case situation. And I mean, it seems like, you know, we're not gonna, really gonna know what the potential impacts are um until we get the, the plan. So if that changes case by case, I would like that, including but not limited to.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mohajer. I did wanna see if you could, we could look at the ordinance itself, I just wanna make sure.
You know, before we start going down to carving this thing up, but let's hear from the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then we can close the public comment and maybe this guy has a life, I don't know. All right, you know what, we're gonna open it up to the public and uh, you know, I have one speaker slip, so Mr. Ayers or Ayers, you, you will, you will correct me one way or the other. Please give your name and address.
You weren't old enough to try the first name, were you? Uh my name is Rink Ayers, I'm here in Santa Maria. The.
Sir, you have three minutes, by the way. Go ahead.
Okay. Um so I'll, I'll try to keep my comments brief. As everyone knows, the state is pushing towards renewable energy and with that means batteries are going to come. Uh it's, is a situation where um the state is already mandating larger facilities, they're gonna start going more and more and more, or I should say smaller and smaller and smaller as uh there's pushback from communities. I happen to be in the telecommunications industry, I build cell phone towers and as we know in all those jurisdictions, the state finally goes, enough, we're just gonna force this on you. I happen to also manage the company that owns the property next to one of the substations here in town. And I think this is one of the things that we're forgetting about here or we're kinda losing the forest for the trees. There's only two substations in Santa Maria. One is the Santa Maria one up near Main and Depot area, um and the other one is on Industrial Parkway. That's it, that's all we have. The M2 land that is near those, the closest to the Santa Maria one is uh down Depot Road, it's about point six miles. The closest to the fairway one is about 2.3 miles. But here's the rub, these facilities that are smaller, that are less than 100 megawatts, have to be within 1,000 feet of a substation. So you've already just told everybody it's not gonna be allowed to have a battery facility here because there's no M2 within 1,000 feet of a substation. So all this stuff that we're talking about is really immaterial because you've just effectively said it can't be done. There's only two properties that are undeveloped in Santa Maria, they're both M1 properties that are within 1,000 feet of a substation. One has already got a permit, one happens to be the one that I own. Um we have been approached, so the, the entity that you're talking about is the one that's been talking to us about leasing land. We don't have a lease with them, but they're looking at the property that we have because it is immediately adjacent to the substation. It is M1. I find it really curious that the limit on distance to residential or sensitive areas was put at a quarter mile, which is uh whatever, 1,300 feet and change, because this property is like 1,200 feet from a house. So this property, because it's more than 1,000 feet limit, couldn't be used for it according to this ordinance, proposed ordinance. Um I, I think we're really trying, we're getting worked up over things that don't matter if you're gonna limit it to, to M2. You know, distances and notices, it, it just can't happen. Eventually, these properties, these things are going to have to come into our town, you know, I understand the concern about the fire.
Go ahead and finish up.
Okay.
Finish your statement.
Thank you. I took the tag off it and walked out Walmart and it's still beeping. So just a few more comments, I don't wanna go really long. Um I'm, I'm not sure that we would have this kind of reaction. Um I kind of correlated to cars, accidents and plane accidents. We hear about a plane accident, oh my gosh, you know, but we still keep on driving our cars, we, we still keep on flying. We have had fires here in this town, right? We have had industrial fires, but I'm really kinda surprised at the reaction to this fire versus other ones. The technology has not been used for years that was used on moss landing. The technology that we're using now and those containers, for example, have never had a fire. These guys spend millions and sometimes billions of dollars on this, these facilities. They're not in the habit of just throwing away money because, oh, we can burn it all off. So although I understand the, the concern, there will never be a point where a fire can't happen, but I don't know, I think, I, I, I am in the opinion that, that we're overreacting to this. Secondarily, you, you mentioned the safety thing of off-gassing. Um I think, again, people are getting concerned about something that is not a real threat. These batteries off-gas the same as your phone battery off-gases. It only off-gases when there's a problem. They don't, it doesn't have gas coming in and out as it ionizes and deionizes, just doesn't happen. So that's not an ongoing concern. So my only comments to this would be, obviously, if this company that has been talking to us about leasing our land came in, sounds like you're gonna throw a moratorium on it. They can't even apply because it's an M1 property. Now, the one that's already approved, again, to recap, is already on an M1 property. The substation is on M1 property. This is also, these are also the only two properties in town that aren't next to anything close by.
You can wrap it up, sir.
Yeah, uh because it's surrounded by a few buildings and then um the country club. So anyway.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no other public out there, um let's go ahead and close the public hearing and um additional questions or comments by the commissioners, discussions. Let's start.
Thank you, Chair. Um so just in theory, um if this amendment doesn't move forward, if city council doesn't adopt it, what happens? Where do we stand? Where, where does this go?
If the council chooses not to adopt this ordinance, um there's all sorts of possible things. They could direct staff to do some permutation of an ordinance. They could choose to put a moratorium in place, um maybe, maybe not, because we don't have the application in yet, but they could choose to decide to say that if an application were to come in, they would put one in place. Uh they may decide that the other legislation that's in process is enough and, and wait to see what happens with that. There's all sorts of different ways the council could go, but if this were not adopted, um again, our code does not specifically identify these, so I believe we would have to, if we were to receive an application, come to the commission and ask that the commission make the finding that this use is not more obnoxious than other uses that are considered in whichever zone the application comes to us for. And so that would be a initial finding that the commission's willing to consider best in whatever zone it's applied for and we would be having that facility also be a conditional use permit under that zone. It would have to be a conditional use permit by the mere fact that it's not specifically identified in our code. So the only option would be. So the only option would be to ask that it be a conditional use permit and then also have to make the conditional use permit findings.
If I could try and concise that down.
Sorry.
I think the answer is if we do nothing, then the status quo as it is today is what would continue. We don't currently regulate best facilities specifically. So we'll try, what Mr. Albro was describing is we then kind of have to figure out, what is it similar to? Where might it fit? And as you see, in, we've previously approved one in the M1. Am I mixing it up? The M1. So it could end up anywhere where we felt that it could fit within the definition of what that zone allows, but it would require a CUP. So that doesn't mean it's a permitted use. It would require a CUP, which would mean it would come before you, and you would have the opportunity to impose conditions and regulate it or deny it if it was an incompatible site. But it would just, we don't have any current regulations on them. If we do this, we can at least limit it to the M2 with a conditional use permit for your consideration.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was alluding to, I guess, is if an application came forward without any of these amendments, where do we stand? We stand like what you're saying, is we're kind of reviewing individual applications as they come. Got it. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, I never know when that's on. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I just kind of have to second with the notice. I think that it's important to place, you know, residents and even businesses if they're next to this new, you know, neighboring situation, Jason Parcel. It's important to put them on notice. And I do appreciate that the ordinance does call for robust emergency plans to be, you know, implemented prior to anything because, you know, the placement of these facilities hold great weight for the community, understanding the potential fires and whatnot. As for Dana's point to the agricultural land, I'm not too sure whether, you know, whether it's under cultivation or not is the best route to specify because from what I heard and what I gleaned, it's a case-by-case situation. We don't know where, you know, these might pop up. And so, I mean, I'm just fine with, you know, kind of broadening the language, like I said earlier, to say, including but not limited to. As it is written, it seems pretty, you know, specified to residential developments and, you know, where people reside. And I mean, there's other things other than homes and schools, public facilities. So that's just kind of my input on it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Seifert.
It's a tough decision here. So we already approved one of these in an M1 zone, and now we're saying that we can't do that again. And if the speaker was correct, and it has to be within 1,000 feet, then no one's going to be applying for anything that we're, that we're advocating for here because none of these, none of these locations are going to be close enough that they would actually I very much like the fact that it's a CUP and that it has to come to us regardless of the zoning. I'm a little torn because I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves on our knowledge of what's, what we, what we really need to be looking at here. So if it doesn't work in M2, if it only works in M1, if there's only two locations that it's going to work, I think we really need to address that more than just limiting it to M2. So it's, I have my own fears about the fires and the toxic, toxicity and that type of thing. I'm not, I'm not a big proponent of this technology, but it is coming down the pike, and there's really nothing that we can do about it. The state is adamant that, that we do this, and then more and more people are adding battery packs to their homes, which are going to actually have the same problem in a smaller sense than exactly what we're talking about here. The more and more people that have the battery backup in their home, the more batteries we have out there, the more fires and more, that are, that are possible. So this is a tricky one for me. I'm still thinking about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. I guess where I, I fall on this is that I'm concerned that we don't have all the information. I mean, and that, and staff was quite clear on that. It's, we don't know what the findings from Moss Landing are going to be. We don't know what the technology is going to be, you know, from the standpoint of, of a reaction to the things that happened, the findings from Moss Landing. We don't know what the, what the state is going to do once they look at all of these things. And so I, I guess where I fall on, on it right now is the better safe than sorry stance. The things that, that I advocated for, or talked about briefly, I, I think they're still all good, and I, and I accept the, I accept, accept what the speaker has said is being accurate. But once again, what does it hurt? What does it hurt to put these, these other restrictions on and just give all those other entities the time they need, including frankly, our own, our own fire department, to assess and look at all of the reports, the things that are coming down the pipe from California? And just, it's just something that I think, it's a technology that I absolutely agree is, is going to be here. I mean, it will be used. But the question is, which of the technologies is going to be the most prevalent? Is it going to be the A-Track or is it going to be the CD? You know, who knows? And so, or streaming. So from my standpoint, I would rather, once again, err on the, on the point of caution like Commissioner Seifert, you know, if, if for some reason we didn't have all of the things quite in place and something was built and something happened, you know, I just want to make sure that we've done the most we can to have, to ensure the safety of, of our community, at least over the next one or two years while we, while all those other entities are, are doing their thing. So.
Chair Dickerson, if I, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but you just wouldn't look this way.
Oh.
If I could just add one other thing. If we do get this ordinance in place, that doesn't stop us from at any time amending the ordinance.
Right.
Adopting a new ordinance.
Or peeling back things.
So this doesn't mean we adopt this and then we, you know, close our eyes. We'll continue to follow the technology. The fire department will continue to learn as everybody else does, and we can come back with a new ordinance at any time if we feel that there are some concrete things that we do now want to put in place that would help. Now, an ordinance does take a little bit of time. You need to introduce it and adopt it, but this isn't, whatever we do at this point, we're not committed to for eternity. You know, we can't always come back and make changes.
Right. So it's not set in stone. So whatever we put forward now, even if we put the most draconian thing forward, once these reports come out, once we hear from fire, once we hear from the state, you guys can all come back to us and we can start peeling all this stuff back and have our.
Yes, you know what we could even do? You could even direct to have like a report in a year as to, you know, how many, what's, what's happened since we last talked? Have we had new applications? Have, has the PUC come down with new rules? I believe the speaker said, and it's possible, you know how housing went? Cities weren't approving enough housing because of all the nimbyism, and the state said, fine, now you have to accept them. In fact, we're not even going to let you consider them. They're going to be ministerial over the counter. The same thing I predict is going to happen with this. They already have the 200 megawatt or larger that they've taken, and California is on a clean energy mission, and they have all these clean energy goals that must be achieved. And if they feel that the cities are standing in the way of those goals, they'll probably end up usurping of the authority away from us in the future anyways. But that doesn't mean that we don't still try to protect ourselves as much as we can and do the best we can. And at this point, we believe that's getting an ordinance in place to limit these to the M2, to put in these sensitive receptor barriers, increase the notification so the public will at least know that it's happening, and continue to monitor and, you know, have it be a living document that we can change moving forward.
Wonderful.
Does that also include the zoning? That's something that can be modified if we find out that, that the only place this could be is in an M1?
We could always end up coming back and expand it to, to the M1 or some other zoning. Also, I don't know the answer to this. It would be a planning question, but we are doing the general plan amendment. I think there's going to be potentially maybe modifications to some zoning through that. We also may be doing some annexations. That will increase property. I don't know if any of that would end up being M2, but just because the way it looks today doesn't mean that, you know, it might not look different in the future.
Yeah. And even a more optimistic thought, Commissioner Seifert, I mean, what if in a year or two years we find, or the new technology comes out and we do open up all these, these different places that they can go? We can go to M1, maybe we can go to other things because now the technology doesn't have the same impact that, that we're concerned about tonight. So that's another optimistic thing.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. So let's see. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to add, I was wondering the same question or had the same thought. I mean, obviously, it's, it's a living text. It's not going to be set in stone for eternity. So I figured there's the opportunity to revisit that, but then also thinking to myself, boy, this is looking like a house, like it's moving along the same lines as housing, where we may not have a choice in the future, and if we have nothing to stand on, at least, at least this gives us something to stand on. Do we know the numbers? No. Even the fire marshal doesn't know the numbers, so we do our best with, which is within reason. And I like, like Commissioner Seifert's idea, so let's extend this to, you know, residents or people that are actually living there, so it's not just one property owner gets a letter and they miss it. And the fact that we could not limit the uses to the ones that were described in the, in the text here, but it could be others. I think that's also leaves us open to that opportunity to include other kind of facilities. Currently, I guess, sounds like we're pushing like a two-mile notification from what I can tell, which I guess, hey, stamps are cheap in regards to trying to notify people. I can't imagine that cost would be an issue. So why not extend it to two miles? Heck, why not just notify the whole city? You know, let everybody know because we're, if we're, everybody's downwind, we might as well all know that there's a potential issue, you know, potentially an issue citywide. I don't know. But yeah, it sounds like to me like it, better to have something than to have nothing, and it's something that will evolve, you know? Today's technology sounds like it's the most advanced, and in 10 years, it won't be. In one year, it won't be. In 100 years, this will be who knows what, right? So there's no snapshot in time where I think we'll be the most up-to-date and technologically advanced. So it's definitely a difficult one, but it sounds like it's something that we should definitely strongly consider as having something in place anyways.
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt again.
No, that's all right.
I've heard it twice now.
I don't, I don't look over that way. I'm sorry.
I've heard it, contemplated twice now, so I just, I want to address it. As much as I understand the concern about sensitive receptors and that we've captured residential schools and hospitals, and you think, oh, well, what about, you know, maybe a clinic or something that isn't a hospital but has patients? Or what about some kind of after-school thing that maybe, or, you know, like daycare, it is no school? As much as I understand wanting to leave that open, then we run the risk that our ordinance is invalidated for being vague and ambiguous. So we can't have open-ended sensitive receptors. We're going to have to commit to the ones we feel are the most egregious or potentially create the most danger. And then the others will just have to be addressed at this stage when the CUP comes before you. So if we didn't include something, and it turns out that this one, somehow this M2 lot is right next to something that's very sensitive that we absolutely wouldn't want it next to, then we can deny it with the CUP by making the findings that it's an incompatible use. But unfortunately, in order to have our ordinance be valid and not, you know, not to be susceptible to challenge, we can't have an open-ended list of sensitive receptors.
Thank you very much. Any other com, oh?
In English? So what's the distance? Are you, I mean, we have to come up with a distance?
No, no, no. I was responding to maybe, I thought that one or two commissioners had mentioned, instead of saying, can't be within, oh, God, what is it? 1,320 feet of a residential school or hospital, they wanted it to say residential school, hospital, or other sensitive use. And I'm saying it can't be vague like that. We have to list the sensitive uses.
That particular.
Yeah. But the, the distance, we can put whatever we think is reasonable for that noted, for that distance and for the notification.
Two separate items.
Yeah, two separate things.
Yes, and, and Commissioners, just to add to that, so we pulled up the ordinance on our screen, so that's what's on your screen, and if you see letter B there and letter C, those are the two items that we've been talking about. So B has to do with what uses are located within a quarter mile, and then C talks about the noticing. And so I wanted to bring that up just so that we could get a clear recommendation, because we're going to be forwarding this to the planning commission, should your commission recommend that, or to the city council, should your commission recommend that? And so I thought it'd be easiest to just pull the language up so we could look at it together. But as Ms. Wyndham said, we, if you wanted to add something additional there like agriculture, it would have to be that specific use that we would add in, not something open-ended.
Okay. Can I, so I think we had four items, three, and then a new fourth one, I think, has been added for us to look at. The first is the, is the notification. I think that we've come down on two miles for the notification, so I don't know if you want to edit those on the fly or just write it down. Okay. The second thing is to alleviate the issue of ambiguity, we're just going to add ag land, agricultural land to the thing, whether it's within the city or outside the city. The third thing was the idea that I put out there, which was the recommendation to the city council that, that if a permit did happen to figure out a way to make its way through, that, that would produce a trigger for them to be notified and maybe an agendized item or something along that line, that they could then look to, to possibly creating a moratorium. And maybe that's something that we sunset out. We put that as a one- or two-year concept. And the reason I put one or two years is because the fourth thing is per what council has suggested, that, that I think that maybe a year from now, that staff should present a report on where we're at with, where, where the world is with bests, and then we can readdress all of these things and see whether things need to be loosened up or maintained where they're at. So if somebody wants to make a recommendation or a motion, and they want to include all, some, or none of these, then we can go through that process.
Did you also want to include the notification, individual notification, rather than?
Yes, thank you. That's correct.
Just property.
Residents.
So we would be two miles, including individual residential notification.
Residents and owners, yeah. Thank you. Does someone want to make a motion? Does someone want to make a motion on the resolution?
Do we forget something?
All right. I will make a motion on the motion. No, you want to make it, Tim?
You got it under control.
Okay. So by resolution, I recommend that the city council approve zoning text amendment Z2025-0002 with the following modifications. The first is that all notices, that the notices for, for these will be for two miles regarding, and it'll be for owners and occupants. The second is that we are going to add ag land to one of the additional elements there. The third is that we're going to put a recommendation to the city council that should a application move forward, that a, or be presented to staff, that, that the city council will be notified and that it is our recommendation that a year and a half from, from, from whenever the, this ordinance is done, that, that there may be, that may trigger a moratorium on their consideration of a moratorium. And then finally, that, that staff, a year from the, from this ordinance being approved by city council, that they come back to us with a report on Besses and the state of the industry, technology, and how it applies to what our current ordinances are.
And that's a yearly, yearly report? Or just once?
No, just once. This, this coming year, and I suppose we could ask for, in a year, another report in two years if, if it turns out things have not really moved forward well. And I think that would be the case for any of these other elements, too. And that's my motion. Do we hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Can we get a vote?
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. And that is that. Okay, let's go on to oral reports from planning commissioner and staff. And by the way, thank, thank you for coming out and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. This is Dana Eadie, Planning Division Manager. And so I just wanted to give you an update on some upcoming meetings that we have. So we do have a study session that is scheduled tomorrow at 1:30 at, in Shepherd Hall at the library. We have two items on the agenda tomorrow. One of them is the objective design standards. And so it's the third study session on that item. And then there's also a proposal for a new mixed-use project that involves a grocery store use that we're going to be presenting to you for discussion. And then looking ahead, we're, we're really busy at this moment. We have actually a lot going on. So April 2nd, we have the former Sears building remodel for a new grocery store. It's a downtown permit and that's on the agenda for April 2nd. That did go to the Downtown Revitalization Committee, I think.
April 2nd, is that the public hearing?
Yes. So it's a public hearing on that. So that, we did have a Downtown Revitalization Committee meeting on that last month. And so now we're going to move that forward to a hearing with, with your commission. And then we have tentatively scheduled the objective design standards for April 2nd as well, just looking ahead after the study session. And then another item we need to work on is on April 3rd. So there are some zoning text amendments for accessory dwelling units that we need to complete. And so I've been working on that and would like to do a study session with you all on April 3rd. And then April 17th, we're looking at a study session as well related to Splash and Dash's car wash. So quite a bit going on. And we potentially may be able to cancel the April 16th hearing, but I will send an email to you all, updating you on that, if that's the case.
The Splash and Dash was the third also?
No, Splash and Dash is April 17th.
Oh, April 17th.
At this point, at this point. These are a bit ways out, but we're already almost, you know, to April. So it's, the year is flying by. So that's all I have for the update unless you have any questions. So thank you.
Dana, did you say the objective design standards is tomorrow? Right? And also April 2nd?
The hearing.
The hearing is April 2nd?
We are looking at doing a hearing with you on April 2nd and then it ultimately has to go to city council after that.
Okay, April 2nd's a hearing, that's right. Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
Oh, it looks like...
Yes. Can we hear from legal?
I just wanted to let everyone know that I apologize. I will not be present tomorrow for your study session. If you have any questions ahead of time, you want to try and catch me, I'll probably be available from like 11 to 12. Or, you know, you can call me anytime afterwards.
If we just find it unacceptable, we can browbeat you to showing up.
Or that is just the study session. So we could always resolve them between then and the public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? I think we're done. Thank you.
I had a feeling.